I started the recording. It will take a moment to begin. It's it started.
Fantastic. All right, I'd like to officially call this meeting to order. If you would stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you so much. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. And if it is okay with the council, since I was the only member that was in attendance for the first several ones, I will make the motion if you're okay with that. If you've had the opportunity to read that, I would appreciate it. So I would like to make a motion that we accept the minutes as written for April 12th, 2021, April 13th, 2021, April 19th, 2020, for both the work session and special meeting, as well as the closed session, the Town Council Budget Work Session of April 20th, the Town Council Meeting of April 26th, as presented. I'm going to stop there. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We have the other minutes if someone would like to make a motion to accept the May minutes.
This is Councilman Jenkins. I'll make a motion to approve the Town Council Minutes of May 10th, the work session, special meeting of May 11th, and the work session, the special meeting on May the 18th, and the Town Council Meeting of May 25th.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, that brings us down to our next item on the agenda, legislation, emergency ordinance 21-14. Brent?
All right, I believe I'm unmuted. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Town Council. Emergency ordinance concerning Americans Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funding, for the purpose of authorizing the town of La Plata to accept certain grant funds available to the town from the federal government under the American Rescue Plan Act, authorizing the town manager to execute on behalf of the town certain documents required for the town to receive such funding, and generally relating to the town receiving ARPA grant funds.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion for someone to accept emergency ordinance 21-14 as presented?
I make a motion, we accept ordinance 21-14, emergency ARPA funding.
Do I have a second?
Madam Mayor, this is Evelyn. I second.
Fantastic. Thank you. Any discussion, Council?
This is Councilman Jenkins. Curious, do we know what items might be eligible for this funding yet, or is that still to be determined?
Kevin, are you online?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Councilman Jenkins, there's been initial guidance given by the Treasury Department. They're still working out a number of disputes on what funding can be used for or not. Once we get a final number from the Treasury and we are, the funding is given to the town, we will come forward to Mayor and Council and present information in regards to what we can use the money for and have a discussion on that.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I have a motion that has been properly seconded. Please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed to accepting this money? Motion carries. Brings us to ordinance 21-16 for introduction.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, an ordinance concerning resource protection for the purpose of comprehensively revising and recodifying Town of La Plata Development Regulations relating to flood plain management and flood hazard areas, forest conservation, storm drainage, stream resources, wetland resources, steep slopes, hydroic soils, and highly erodible soils, rare, threatened, and endangered species, and all matters generally relating thereto.
All right, thank you very much. This is for introduction, so Danielle, always keep me straight. We don't need a motion on this, correct? Okay, good. Does Council have any questions on this?
I just, Councilman Jenkins, just a comment. I believe Director Harrington indicated that after legal review, this would be brought forward, so I assume that that's where we are tonight, is it's had all the legal review that's needed.
This is Director Harrington. You are correct. The town attorney did go through and put this in ordinance form, and everything has been vetted, so it is ready for introduction.
Thank you.
And Danielle, would you offer for us to just kind of get a consensus to move forward?
Well, if you're willing to introduce the ordinance, this would be the first reading, and then that vote could take place at the next business meeting. Or actually, Janine, let me open it one second, please. I just wanted to double check the schedule before I talk out of turn. So then the adoption would be considered on July 27th, but if you're not prepared to introduce this ordinance at this time, then we can schedule it for your next work session.
I personally don't have any opposition to moving forward with this. Councilman Chonger?
Yeah, just two questions, and this may be a stupid question, but just for readability, is this section typically all capital letters? Is that just my copy? Or is that typical for this product, Ms. Harrington maybe, or Ms. Manley?
Ms. Harrington, I can take that if you're okay with it. When we do legislation, the all caps is the way to identify any new language that's being added to the law. Unfortunately, in this case, when it's an entire chapter, it makes it very, very difficult. But if you, just for the public's information, let me get down to the bottom. It has the explanations, and with that, I receive a lot of complaints because it's very hard to read, but that's, you know, I'm not stuck with the old way of doing things. So if this is something you'd like to explore on a different way to identify new language, I am very much open to that.
Yeah, so that kind of went to my second question. What's the big difference between the two? And clearly, it's a huge difference just because we're completely revising it. But is there, is there anything in particular that we should be looking at as a major improvement on this?
Director Harrington, would you like for me to field that one as well?
Sure.
There's, from the last draft that you saw, there's nothing major that has been changed. Really, it was just cleaning it up, applying the appropriate section numbers and formatting, putting it in ordinance form. As far as the language goes, there's nothing substantial that has changed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, are we comfortable with moving this forward for adoption in July? Councilman Jenkins?
Just real quick, I just wanted to say thank you to the staff because this was a, and the planning commission, because this was a huge undertaking to do all this and combine it in ordinance, and it's pretty complicated stuff, so I want to just publicly say thank you for doing this. It's a long time needed, but thank you very much for doing this.
And are you good with moving forward?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, Councilman Goldsmith?
Yeah, I'm happy with moving forward.
Councilman Chonger?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Brian Ward? Okay, so we're going to move forward, but brings us to our next item, which is for introduction, ordinance 21-17 Personnel Policy Manual, Social Media.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council, an ordinance concerning Town Personnel System for the purpose of amending certain personnel rules and regulations, adding rules and regulations related to the use of social media in the Town's Personnel Policy Manual, and adding an appendix to the Town's Personnel Policy Manual, and all matters generally relating thereto.
All right, does Council have any questions? Okay, are we comfortable moving forward on this one? I see, yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so let's put that on the schedule to move forward for that for next month as well, for adoption, which brings us to Resolution 21-12 Operations Used Tractor Purchase.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Town Council, a resolution concerning operations used truck purchase for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract purchase agreement for the purchase of a used 2013 Caterpillar tractor.
Do I have a motion to accept Resolution 21-12 as presented?
Madam Mayor, this is Councilwoman Brian Ward. I move that we accept Resolution 21-12, a resolution concerning operations used truck purchase as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Brings us down to our next item, which is Resolution 21-13 for introduction and consideration of adoption.
This is Madam Mayor, Town Council, a resolution concerning Sustainable Maryland Municipal Certification Program for the purpose of confirmation and support the application for certification in the Sustainable Maryland Municipal Certification Program, adoption of the Green Team Action Plan, adoption of green purchasing policy, and all matters related thereto.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to accept Resolution 21-13?
This is Councilman Jenkins. I'll make a motion to accept Resolution 21-13 Sustainable Maryland Municipal Certification Program.
Do I have a second?
I'd like to second that here.
Any discussion?
Again, this is Councilman Jenkins. I had an opportunity to participate in the Green Team Meeting last week, and again, I just want to say thank you for their efforts, and also Kelly Fitts and then Ms. Danley as well, because they've spent a lot of time putting this together, and so I really appreciate this effort, and I think this is a very good program over a three-year period. And what's also good about it is that it cuts across all the departments in the town, as well as looking at partnership and collaboration with their partners. So I fully support this, and I hope we can, no pun intended, we can sustain this over three years.
Thank you. Do I have any other comments? I just have to say I'm geeking out about this because I'm so excited about this. So I do, we have an incredible team that is heading this up, so I am excited about this, if it passes in a second. So I've got a, I've got a motion that's been properly seconded. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Now I can geek out. Motion carries. Thank you very much. That brings us down to our section for public forum. If anybody would like to speak, we ask that you state your name, your address, whether you're in the incoherent town limits, and please limit your comments to about three minutes. Do I have anyone who would like to speak this evening?
Yes.
I would, Mayor.
I heard that Glendora, Glendoro, if you would like to go ahead?
Yes, thank you. My name is Glendora Rogers, and I am located at 121 Calmia Court, my concerns, my concerns tonight is with our location being in the town of La Plata, we have several items over in the Calmia Court area. First, I'd like to say that Calmia Court is, does not have an HOA that is active, one of the issues that we're having. And number two, does not have an active HOA, we have a lot of concerns and implications that we've been trying to move forward on and have not been successful. One of which is the town of La Plata has a median in the middle of Calmia Court that we have a lot of overgrown bushes that is impeding the visibility of the signs there that say do not enter or stop, and we were trying to get some of those, the shrubbery and the foliage cut back on those streets, and most of the trees that, that have, that are covering that area, it's owned by the town of La Plata. Also, the, where there is emergency, emergency parking, the yellow curbs need to be refreshed. They have faded out. We've asked, you know, we as our homeowners here have asked if you can provide some, those things, but, you know, we really want to improve the look and over on Calmia Court. Another issue that we're having is there's a storm drain that's in the road that has a sinkhole attached to it, and the sinkhole unfortunately is against one of the housing parking lots, parking spots, but the drain that it connects to is in the, in the street. So we were trying to see if we could get that sinkhole filled as well. And another issue that we were, if there's grant or funding available for the town of La Plata with us not having an HOA, is it possible that we can get some of that funding to get repaved over here and new markings over in the Calmia Court area? And lastly, I'd like to address the fact of parking. We have no visitor, we don't have enough visitors parking. What we have is this median that's owned by the town of La Plata that's in front of, if you come down the street, it's a grassy area. What we are proposing, if there's funds available, if we can have that turned into visitors parking, that would help the town with some of the disturbance with people not having parking spaces, when they come home, cars parked behind each other because we don't have any parking spots, people putting cones out to reserve their second spot so that other people won't take that spot. I think if there's funds available, if we can get that area, that grassy area that nobody utilizes, that sits in the middle of Calmia Court, turned into visitor spots, that would give us about 10 or 12 visitors parking spots that will help deter some of the disturbance that will, that goes on in the town because we don't have enough parking spots available when we have visitors over. So I was hoping that some of those concerns could be addressed, some help or information on how we can get help for repaving and remarking the, the area here, as well as this shrubbery and foliage being cut back. If that's something that you have funds for and can help us, we would greatly appreciate that over in the Calmia Court area.
Thank you, Glendora. I hear you, and we want to help. And, and there are, I'm going to have Brent Manuel, since he is in charge of everyone for operations on that, just kind of address a couple things that we might be able to do and some challenges we might have that we have to overcome. So, Brent, can you address Glendoro, please?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you. Ms. Rogers, thank you for appearing, first of all, and provided, I have the list now, and I think that it's important to identify there are some things on there that we can do immediately. There are other things that may take a little longer to come up with solutions, but I think that, you know, the important thing is to open a dialogue between the town and your, even though you're not an HOA, you know, you're still residents of the town, and we value you as our citizens. So I think we need to keep an open dialogue, and we need to show, we, the town needs to show progress over there, especially over the things we control. We can take care of that starting tomorrow. There are other issues that you've identified that may take a little longer, but we need to keep, keep pressing. As far as the establishment of the HOA, your, your community is not unique. There are other communities around that also have sort of defunct HOAs, and the town is trying to sort of come up with an overall solution. It's unfortunately not a one-size-fits-all, but we're trying to see where we can assist in maybe getting some of these homeowners associations back up and running. So we are, we've had, we actually had a meeting on another development today, talking about the same types of concerns, so we're working on that. You know, I think the important thing is to know that, you know, what, what we own, we control, and we can make those changes, and then we can work to try to, the one question I did have was regarding the parking area and the restriping. Is that on private property or is that town-owned property?
It is the whole Calmia Court area.
Okay.
I'm assuming that's town because it's, you know, just the whole area needs to be repaved and restriped.
Yes, and it may be best for us maybe just to meet on site, and we can walk the property, and we can sort of identify some of these concerns you have, and, you know, sometimes putting eyes on it will help explain a picture, provide a picture, give a story to me, so I can better, you know, sort of come up with an approach that we can, that we can do to, to make things better.
Okay.
So maybe, I think Danielle has your information. Is that correct, Danielle? I see you nodding. I will get that from Danielle, and I will, we can arrange a time, maybe by sometime the end of this week if possible, or the weekend, depending on your work schedule, and we can meet out there on site, and we can walk that, and anyone else from council that would want to participate would be more than welcome to, to be involved as well. So, you know, I just want you to know that we, we hear you, and we're here, we're here to help, and you never want to hear that from the government, but I truly, truly intend to make things better.
Okay, I appreciate that. And one last thing, the Kent Square, the Kent Square Road, Kent Avenue Road, and the Charles Street, for the main street in town, Charles Street, this park, this, coming on to the traffic from Kent Avenue is a nightmare right there by that theater. Is there some way that the parking spots that are right there can be just limited to small compact vehicles? When you have those SUVs that are parked there, you have to park, come out, almost all the way out in the road just to see the traffic direction. And I almost got hit by a, a police officer because I, it was clear on the right, and it was clear on the left as far as I can see, and I had to pull out into the road just to see because there's big SUVs parked along that, that little strip there. Is that, is there a way that those barriers can either be pulled back so that the cars there can see going into, you know, the oncoming traffic on the left-hand side, or can we limit that to just compact vehicles?
Yes, that's something we can look at, Ms. Rogers. We actually have a safety committee amongst the town staff, so we can evaluate that. Of course, it is, you know, Route 6 is owned by the state, but, you know, the right-of-way that we control, we can definitely look at it and see if there are any safety improvements. And like you said, maybe a solution could be just limiting the parking to compact vehicles, or maybe, or even the parking altogether. But, you know, we, we can look at that, and I have a note also to look at that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I am currently working from home for right now, so anytime that we can coordinate this week, I'm, I'm here, I'm out as early as seven, eight, you know, whenever we can coordinate, I'm willing to do that. And I have several people in the community as well that is supporting this, so we can all meet.
Okay, that's great. I will reach out. I'm out of the office tomorrow, but I will reach out maybe Thursday, early morning.
Great, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Ms. Rogers, and thank you, Mr. Manuel. Just, I just want to make, if I could request that I be looped in on the messes traffic and be able to meet out there as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Glendora. Appreciate that. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak this evening?
I would, Mayor.
All right, go ahead. The floor is yours. Go ahead, Mike. Okay, Mike, I hear nothing if you're talking.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
All right. If it's determined that the ARPA funds can be used to repair all of the stormwater sewers affected by sinkholes or collapsed pipes, et cetera, can the town explore looking into farming this work out to private contractors so we can get it all done at one time and not have to wait? And there's many of them, I understand, that need attention.
Thank you for that. We will, it's premature to really talk about what we can spend the money on yet because we don't know exactly how much we will be getting, but that is something we will definitely take under consideration. So thank you for that.
All right, thanks.
All right. Do I have anyone else who would like to speak this evening? All right, hearing none, we will go on to our monthly reports. Chief, you're up.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Hope everybody's doing well. In May of 2021, our officers responded to 896 calls for service. 170 of those calls, or about 20%, were either at box stores or hotels. 34 of the calls were handled at hotels, with the deluxe in seeing the most at 14. 136 calls were handled at either one of the three box stores or Charles Regional Medical Center, with Walmart having 69 of those calls. Our officers made 29 arrests of adults for various criminal offenses. Our officers investigated 35 Part 1 crimes and 14 Part 2 events. We experienced a case closure rate of 51.43 on Part 1 crimes and 57.14 on Part 2 crimes. We continued in May and up to this point in June to see the growing trend continue to grow of crimes of violence and crimes involving firearms in the town. Training, Ms. Jackie DeSoto, our compliance coordinator, the lady who keeps me straight, attended a 40-hour basic instructor certification course at the Maryland Police Training and Correctional Commissions in Sykesville. Ms. DeSoto will utilize that training to teach our officers and civilians during in-service training. Command staff attended a training forum on Maryland police reform at the Laurel, Maryland Police Department. The training was instructed by members of the Maryland Chiefs of Police Association, the Maryland Sheriff's Association, and their attorneys. There is a lot of police reform that's coming out. Once we really get our minds wrapped around it, we'd like to bring some of it, we'll bring it to the manager, and then hopefully to the council. But to let you know, there are some unfunded mandates, the biggest of which would be body cameras, which we have already been involved in for over two years. As far as events go, the department, in cooperation with multiple community partners, held a community walk, COVID-19 Vaccination Clinic, and Cleanup Day in the Kent Avenue Corridor. Information gained during this event will be built upon with a listening session, and of course, the block party. Want to thank those who attended, including our elected officials, Danielle, and Public Works for their Want to thank those who attended, including our elected officials, Danielle and Public Works for their help. Upcoming events, we have Stuff a Squad Squad Car on July 10th. Sergeant Glenn Plater will again be leading our event. Food donations collected during the Stuff a Car event go to support Lifestyles of Maryland Summer Lunch Program for children and youth who will not be able to have lunch because school is out. Last year, this program or this event brought in enough food to provide about 1,800 lunches for youth in Charles County. Pathfinders for Autism Event will be on July 14th. The event will be held in the parking lot of the Texas Roadhouse. One out of every 54 of our neighbors is somewhere on the autism spectrum and suffers from autism spectrum disorder. Our partners in this event include the Texas Roadhouse, the Sheriff's Office, the Department of Health, Lifestyles of Maryland, and we've reached out to Melwood to see if they want to participate with us as well. Former Baltimore Oriole Hall of Famer BJ Serhoff will be making an appearance at some time during the event. The Eighth Annual Kent Avenue Block Party will be August 21st. We normally have about two dozen partners that join us. The Large Inflatable Water Slide will return, I think it's about 40 feet long, and the 68-foot inflatable obstacle course will be there as well. We're adding an ice cream truck to the event, so we're really looking forward to it. Accreditation, we got a lot of things that'll be coming up over the next year or so with accreditation. We held a mock assessment. We've asked local accreditation managers to review our files and pruse of compliance with a very critical eye. We're in the process of looking over their notes and making adjustments as needed. July 23 through the 31st of this year, our third year compliance review will take place. That's when a compliance service manager reviews about 25% of our files and our written directives and our pruse of compliance to determine if we're operating within law enforcement's best practices. That'll be followed up in February of 2022 with our Year Four Compliance Review, where 100% of our, our written directives and pruse of compliance will be reviewed to determine if we're operating within best practices. On March 28th through the 31st of next year, we will host a Kalia on-site assessment. Two assessors from various parts of the country will come on site for four days. They'll interview our elected officials, employees, community stakeholders, and allied law enforcement partners. The assessment team will hold a two-hour community call-in session and a public hearing. The team will conduct ride-alongs and do other activities. From there, they will prepare their report that will go to the commission. In July of next year, a team from La Plata will attend a Kalia conference hearing to answer questions about the report and our off-site reviews. It will be at that hearing, it will determine if the agency is re-accredited. I just got a text from our grant writer. She hit the send and it was accepted on our Community Oriented Services Grant. I want to thank Kevin and Karina and the mayor for all the work they did today that helped us in the ninth, 10th, 11th, and 11:30 hour to get that thing in. The agency's worked diligently to complete this grant application. The grant proposal profers a partnership between the La Plata Police Department and the Department of Health in an integrated public health initiative. Each organization will play a vital, vital role and have specific responsibilities. The team members for the initiative would include a law enforcement officer and a mental health counselor. LPPD is proposing to hire an officer to work in concert with a trained mental health crisis counselor from the Department of Health. They will serve as a team on active calls for people in mental health crisis, interacting with the homeless and responding to calls with individuals on the autism spectrum and other intellectual and developmental disabilities. The team will follow up with individuals whose call for assistance came in when the team is not working and provide the needed referrals. We truly believe that this proposed pilot model in La Plata will yield the data needed to justify an expansion of this program at county level. We've received quite a few letters of support. Mayor, you wrote one, we appreciate it. We received one from Senator Ellis, Delegate Patterson, the Department of Health, the Department of Social Services, Charles Regional Medical Center, which was endorsed by Dr. Moser, the chief physician, Dana Levy, the chief of nurses, and Bill Grimes, the vice president of ancillary services. And again, I want to thank those that jumped in and helped us. Our grant writer also has received letters of support from Senators Van Hollen and Cardon and Congressman Steny Hoyer. So if there's anything that I can answer about the report, please let me know.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you so much for all your hard work. I don't know why I'm echoing, but I appreciate that. And I know that you guys will be victorious in getting that grant, so that will be very helpful for our residents in the town. And all of the things that you're doing for our town, I greatly appreciate. And does council have any comments?
No, I, I just, real quickly, so yes, real quickly. I appreciate the, the collaboration, Mayor and Police Department Chief in getting this done. I'm excited about this prospect because it seems like more and more we're seeing that some intervention on these mental health crises calls could really save a lot of heartbreak. And I, I really want to applaud everybody involved. And if there's anything that we can do as a council to support you in that, let us know.
I appreciate that. I know Dr. Abney's working very diligently on her end to ensure that this, this program moves forward.
Councilman Jenkins?
Well, Councilman Traulager already said what I wanted to say, so I just want to echo what he said. I couldn't agree more, thank you.
Anyone else? Fantastic, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Director Harrington?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Danielle is sharing my report. My apologies for not getting that back to her in time to add it to the agenda. So for the month of May, and you can click to the next slide, Danielle, or scroll. So for, did we miss a page? Yeah, there we go.
Maybe my mouse is a little sensitive.
Problem, thank you, Danielle. So for development review for the month of May, we had one design review board submission, which was for Dairy Queen and their external reface that they did to their building, which was approved by the board. We had a forest end delineation for a new project called La Plata Gardens. We had a forest conservation declaration intent over on Audi Lane. We had a stormwater management plan for La Plata Gardens and a stormwater management plan for Town Homes at Potomac Square. Town Homes at Potomac Square was an annexation from a few years ago and they are finally, or a couple of years ago, and they are finally getting ready to start submitting their plans for review and approval of the 22 Town Homes. We also had several resubmissions for the month. We had, again, design review board for 109 Charles Street, which is for new construction, forest conservation plan revision for Heritage Green, forest end delineation for the Town Homes at Potomac Square, forest end delineation for La Plata Gardens, stormwater management revision for Chick-fil-A and their parking lot redevelopment, stormwater management for La Plata Gardens and stormwater management for Town Homes at Potomac Square. And you can go to the next page. So for building permits issued in April, there was a total of 77. We had 13 new residential, 11 miscellaneous residential, which included decks and interior alterations. We had one new residential solar panel submission. We had nine residential occupancy permits, two miscellaneous commercial, which were just interior alterations. And I think one was an antenna fit out for one of the existing towers in the town. We had 14 utility permits, nine plumbing permits, nine major facility fee permits, five farmer's market permits, one new permanent sign, and three grading permits. And we can go to the next page. So for code enforcement, Aaron has been quite busy out on the streets. We found several stop work orders that he's been working on and keeping him busy. He did have four citations for unlicensed rental properties, four citations for violations of the Property Maintenance Code, one citation for sign violations, which was for Lazy Boy, which was all the signs that we had out that one weekend and he went out and picked them all up. And then 30 rental inspections were completed in May for him as well. As far as the actual rental licenses received, we got another 37 last month. That brings our total to 109 for the year of 2021 to date. At this point, and this is another topic that I'll pose it almost as a question for the town council, I know that we're starting to open back up to be a little bit more normal. After COVID, we are still technically under the temporary sign moratorium, if I'm not mistaken, which allows each business to have one temporary 32-square-foot sign on their property, not including flag signs, which are not considered signs and are distracting devices. So just, I know I've received a few questions from applicants wondering if this is going to continue or when this might go away. So, and then with that, we can go to the next page. So for future meetings, we are planning on having a planning commission meeting on July 6th. Two items, which I'm sure that Councilwoman Bryant Ward will go over when it's her turn for a commission report. And design review board, it's scheduled for July 14th, but we have not received any submissions at this time. There are a few projects that are outstanding that we are looking for applications on, so hopefully they will get those in. If we do not receive any submissions in time, then we will have to cancel that meeting. And next. So for matters of information, the new council has not been updated on the school seat allocations. I know we had had a meeting earlier on in the year with the previous council discussing school seat allocations. Staff has been working with the Board of Education as well as Charles County Government to put together a plan to look at our, our ordinance and to create allocation pools for our different projects. I will be bringing a presentation forward, most likely in July for the new council. I'll reiterate what we've gone over before and add some of the new information that I've gotten from the Board of Education, just to bring everybody up to date and to move forward with next steps on determining our school seat allocations and how we're going to be doing that for the upcoming year. Still working on ERAGOV, I have not received word back on my reports yet, so I, I followed up with them via email, so hopefully they'll get back to me and we can get that out soon. And then we're still working on the permit development preparation manuals. I'm actually trying to coordinate with SoCal Conservation District and a couple other of our, you know, people that we work with to make sure that I'm including all the information that our applicants are going to need. These manuals are going to be, start to finish, every single step of the permit process, every single step of the development process, all the way down to inspections and closeout. So it's, there's a lot of information that's going into this. It's taking so long because I want to make sure that they are comprehensive, that they are correct, that I've gotten input from all of the applicable parties to make sure everything is, is where it needs to be. And this will be our comprehensive guide for the public as well as staff on how to do everything that we need to do. And next page. Just some updates for you. I got some interesting information the other day. So we adopted our shopping cart ordinance. We distributed all of the applications to the stores that had shopping carts. We have received a couple back. And then we got some great news that there are a couple of the bigger stores in town, I won't name names at this point because I haven't received anything, but they are looking at getting the electronic wheel lock systems for their properties. So this is actually a great thing for the town. This is something that we've been kind of wanting for a while and this ordinance and these applications have kind of spurred that to move forward. So that's great news on that part. The next item that we'll be bringing forward to the council as far as code updates is our building code. We are still working through the minor tweaks and changes to some of the section numbering and working through that. We did receive the comments back from the town attorney, so we'll need to go through that and verify the information. We'll most likely bring that to the next meeting for introduction and move forward with that. And then town boundary, just to keep everyone up to date, we did upgrade our GIS license from basic to standard. And I think I found a way to do our town boundary without having to outsource that, which has been part of the budget the last few years. So I'll keep everyone posted on that. I'm not sure if it's going to work or not yet, but with this update, I have some new tools that will actually allow me to enter in meets and bounds descriptions from deeds and it will automatically populate a boundary. So it's very, very intriguing. I'm seeing if maybe we can save ourselves a good chunk of change by having to outsource that and I'll see how it goes. And I believe that's the end of my presentation. If anyone has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much for all of your hard work, as always. I do have two items. One, it was on my mind, I had my notes here, was on the moratorium for the sign. Now that we have opened up since Monday, everything is officially opened up, is that something that we do have to vote on or does it automatically, I guess, go away since our emergency ordinance is no longer in effect? Matter of fact, that's a Brent question. And I'll have that question answered first before I go into the second one. Well, what process do we need to do to get to rescind the moratorium?
I can attempt to answer it, I don't know how. One of the things I might say is we may want to make the business community aware. And if we do decide to sort of end this moratorium, maybe we advance it a week because we do have to provide notification to the affected parties, which would be, you know, business owners within the town so that we're not going out enforcement first. But I think it may be good. And I was thinking that maybe we even, if we could wait, maybe have it brought onto a work, future work session agenda to explain to the council the reasoning behind it, you know, why we did it. We've done it in the past also under other circumstances, I believe. Maybe give them a history and at that time, see if the council would like to entertain, maybe ending that moratorium. But like I say, I think the main thing, I think I'm sorry to echo. But, you know, just making sure that we communicate with the business community. And I think if we put it on an agenda item, as an agenda item in a future work session, at least they would have the opportunity to see that and maybe provide some sort of feedback to the council prior to a decision being rendered by the board.
I like that idea.
Madam Mayor, this is Danielle.
Yes.
I did pull up the ordinance for the moratorium and it does state that it's during the duration of the state of emergency, which is scheduled to expire July 1st, I believe. So, I mean, we'll, we can certainly read through this and ensure that there's not any other provisions that would need action, but I do believe the intent was for it to expire when the state of emergency expires.
That's what I had thought, but I had not pulled it up myself. So thank you very much for pulling that up. And I do think that our town manager has a very valid point. We don't want to blindside them. And even though it's been put out since March 2019, but, but we work together. Councilman Jenkins, did you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would certainly support the town manager's idea about having a work session to get some additional background. And just a question out loud, I mean, are there any things that's in the, this temporary moratorium that should or should not go forward to be part of the regular sign ordinance? I, I don't, I'm just asking it out loud. And then finally, perhaps, I'm not sure when the next meeting of the La Plata Business Association, I think it's what, the first Wednesday or Thursday, perhaps we can ask to have an agenda item for, for that meeting as well, if, if that's appropriate.
It's on the 7th.
Okay. So perhaps it would be, just a suggestion, if the council has any heartburn or whatever, perhaps just reach out to them as well at that meeting.
That's a great idea. The other question that I had for you, Director Harrington, is that we saw La Plata Gardens on several of the items today. And I know that I was quite surprised, which I probably shouldn't have been, but I was quite surprised that they have submitted plans and that is the Affordable House. submitted plans, and that is the affordable housing project that the governor approved funding for. I am sure that the rest of, or a majority of the residents are unaware of that. What stage are they in now as far as moving forward to a building? And will the council have any other interaction with them on this project?
So as far as the actual site plan and site development plans go, no, the town council would not have any further review of that. It will need to go to the planning commission for the major site plan. At this point, they're at the very early stages of the proposal. They have submitted, generally the first thing that we ask them to submit is their forest delineation, forest conservation plan, and then their stormwater management. The stormwater management is a three-step process. Each step can take up to thirty days, so it's definitely the longer part, and we tell them that you should probably get that in first to, because in order to move forward to the planning commission for the major site plan, you have to have at least step two approval before we'll take you to the planning commission. So that's where they're at right now. They've submitted their forest delineation and the stormwater management step one, which is their concept plan for stormwater management. I did receive a kind of overall concept plan, which I am working with the applicant on. And this is, this project or property was rezoned to CB as part of the comprehensive plan. So that would make it have to go to the design review board as well for their actual architectural design. So we'll need designer review board and planning commission in order to move forward.
Thank you very much. Does any other members of council have any questions for Director Harrington? All right, fantastic. Thank you for doing a great job, as always. All right, next on the agenda is Director Stahl.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. For the month of May, two thousand and twenty-one, we produced twenty-seven million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand gallons of water, and we sold fourteen million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons of water. As you can see from the differential between what is produced and what is sold, we are still having a tremendous problem with the metering, and I will discuss that below. Metering continues to be a problem. We actually have as many as a thousand meters currently not reporting. So the amount of water, now clearly, we are, when we actually go out and send out bills, we're doing a lot of manual reads and things like that to counteract some of this low production numbers. But it does continue to be a real challenge for us. We are working on it. The sewer flow for the month of May, we treated thirty-two million, six hundred and twenty-four thousand gallons of water through the wastewater treatment plant, which is still, you know, significantly higher. And to be honest, that's all due generally to the age of our sewer infrastructure, which does have a lot of challenges with ionized. One of the things that's interesting, the total rainfall for the, for May is about a little around the average, three point eight eight inches of rain for the month of May. It was interesting, I checked the rain for June, and so far in June at the plant, we've gotten a little over three inches of rain. And I live out here on Oliver Shop Road. And the interesting thing is, I'm looking at my rain gauge right now, and at my house, we've had eight point five one inches of rain in the month of June so far. A significant difference. It was very funny. We had that one really, really heavy rain at our house where we had over five inches of rain that one day. And interestingly enough, we did not, we only had about a half an inch in La Plata, and it made a significant difference in literally seven miles in difference. So I would just point that out. Completed work orders this month, you can see the list there in front of you. Some of the things, there clearly are more facilities work orders that have been done. But one is, we're clearly working on the air conditioner at Will's Park. We had to replace the compressor unit in there. We put the new compressor unit in, charged the whole system up. And then the evaporator valve on that unit was also bad, so that is now on order. Because of the hot weather, we put three window units in there in Will's Park at ten thousand BTUs each. And so we were able to keep the entire area cool to be able to rent out without any challenges. So that worked out well over the weekend. Here again, we've had three parks work orders, thirteen water distribution, three sewer collection, twenty-three at the wastewater treatment. We have had seventy-five miss utility locates and sixteen fleet maintenance. One of the things I'd like to do is thank you all very much for allowing us to purchase the new used tractor. That's very helpful. We've already taken the older tractor down to the plant, and we've been able to shift trailers around down there now three times, and it has worked out extremely well for us down there because last night, for instance, at six o'clock last night, we filled the trailer. I was still at the plant. I was able to go down, pull the full trailer out, back the empty trailer in, and we started pressing again with probably in about fifteen minutes. So we pressed until eleven o'clock last night. And either tomorrow or probably tomorrow morning, we will finish filling another trailer, and we will shift those out. So it really has worked out extremely well. As I explained earlier, the water meter upgrade has been a real challenge for us. They shipped us eight hundred of the V four units, but they were the three-wire units without the automatic disconnect connections on them. So we have, we needed an additional four hundred. We have Keystone Utilities, who is going to do the work, but we had all these nodes that we're still waiting for. They've been on order that supposedly Mueller was expediting to us. And we've been waiting with no delivery date, and of course, communication with Mueller has never been the best. But it has been extremely quiet with respect to these meters. The, with respect to sewer, the Public's Work Staff has been working with Hardy Underground, and we made two sewer line repairs at both two oh three and two oh five West Tothorn. We also used Hardy Underground to do a water connection on Washington Avenue in front of the State Highway Administration garage, and we put valves in there so that we could be able to shut them off when necessary. One of the things that, going back to Mr. Runfolo's comment with respect to projects done, as everyone is aware, right now, it is extremely difficult to get contractors. Everyone is short of employees and of help. And contractors right now are extremely busy. And so it's not just as easy as being able to just say, well, you know, we'll get a contractor to do that. It is very difficult to be able to schedule contractors and getting contractors to do things. Lead times also on purchases have been extremely long. We burned a, one of our influence pumps up down at the wastewater treatment plant. We sent it off to be rebuilt in December, and we just got it back last week and installed it back in the influence station down there. So it was six months waiting on parts and then waiting for the pump to be rebuilt. And we're seeing that across the board. Everything has been delayed for parts, and we're waiting on a lot of parts in many different areas. We're trying to rebuild the two booster pumps, for instance, out at well eight. And they're sitting there waiting on all of the seals to come in. So as soon as they come in, we will rebuild those two pumps. But here again, we're at the mercy of waiting on the parts. The EQ Basin down at the wastewater treatment plant is really functioning very well for us. The computer system has really been helping to manage that on a maintenance-free basis, and so we have been very pleased at how that has been working. The chem scan unit, however, down there, which actually constantly monitors the chemical analysis of the effluent coming out of the plant, has been giving us problems since last winter, and we've been fixing it, thinking we had it fixed. We did finally find out that we had two automatic valves in the unit that were not functioning. We did get those in quickly. We were able to get that back online. And so the chem scan unit, for the first time in some time, is back functioning the way it should, and so that's been extremely helpful. I will say that really, the plant is actually functioning extremely well right now. And as I said in my report, knock on wood, we're very lucky at this point. The plant is doing extremely well. The effluent, I actually took my parents. They were down for the weekend, and I took them over to the plant to show them some of the things that we had done because they hadn't been down in a year and a half. And we were looking at the effluent, and I, you know, they were very, very happy with how it is. Really, right now, the plant is functioning extremely well. On the stormwater, Austin Dirt Works completed a project in thirteen thirty and thirteen thirty-two Redwood Circle. They are, my Public Works Group is getting ready to move over to one nineteen and one twenty-one Morris Drive. We were waiting on some piping and things to be able to put in there, but they are going to be there tomorrow, and they will work through to continue to finish that project. And as most of you are aware, Centennial Street remains closed at three oh one on State Highway's request. We are going to try and work with S H A on that. Some of the people, Gina Getler from Baltimore, is coming down to meet with me tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. We're going to try to look at this. We did run a camera through the pipe. It is disjointed in at least three different places that we know. It is disjointed so badly in two of the places, we could not actually run the camera under three oh one. There is a complete disjoint in, under the southbound lane. And there is one over on the shoulder where we had the sinkhole open up, and then there's one on our side. But one of the challenges, the band clamps in the pipe happen to be on the inside. So actually, the pulling a pipe through like we normally would, where we line it with a screw-together high-density polyethylene pipe is not, could be quite a challenge. So we are meeting tomorrow morning with State Highway to determine what we do. We've asked them for some help with the engineering to see whether or not, and how large of a differential we could use between the existing pipe and the slip line pipe. So it's just something we're going to have to look at, but that is a major repair. We will have to replace a lot of the pipe going up Centennial as well, which is all on our side, and we won't be able to share that cost with State Highway. But I will tell you that the previous Mayor Ekman has indicated to me that it was a joint project when that pipe went in, and that pipe went in in the late nineties. So that pipe is not that old. It's only about twenty-five years old. And it is going to have to totally be redone. So we're working on it, and we will keep you updated. The playground mulch has been added at Will's Park and at AgroCopia. The fence repairs have been made at Will's Park. The trash receptacles were replaced at the small pavilions over at Tillman Lake. And the walking blacktop path is scheduled at Silver Linden. And the path will go from the parking area to the playground areas for easier access. On the streets, of course, Triangle Asphalt has been going around and doing a lot of road patches for us throughout the town. W and W Striping continues to work throughout the town. As I think the mayor has had some contacts with Ashley Farmer from S H A as well as myself. State Highway did the restriping on Route Six, but they have not yet done the plastic crosswalks going across the elastomeric plastic that is heat-applied. And there is no schedule. She was supposed to let us know the schedule. But Mayor, unless you've heard any different, I have not heard, and I'm meeting with Ashley tomorrow to try and see if we can narrow that down as to when that's going to occur, because that continues to be a safety issue. We have new streetlights going in in the new sections of AgroCopia, and we're waiting for SMECO to put those three work orders in. We don't have a start date on that as of yet. We've contracted A P F for some sidewalk repairs, and we're waiting for some quotes for some additional stormwater projects. Here again, getting with contractors on any of this right now, they are so busy. Just to get quotes out from them is quite a challenge. We did have Real Tree, Tree Services come out and trim the trees along Heritage Green Parkway, as you know. And some of the good news is that we did get our new trash cans in. So the new trash can order that we placed back in, I believe, either February or March, actually came in last Friday. The trucking company called us, and we had to bring a crew of people in on the holiday to unload all the trash and recycle containers. But they did come in, and we have been distributing them this week, which is very good. And we will, hopefully, as soon as, maybe next month in July, we will be ordering our next order, since these orders have been taking so long. The other thing is, in July, we will bring you our new trash truck order, which is in the budget, because they're indicating to us that the lead times for the new trash truck could be as long as six months, if not longer. So if we ordered the new trash truck in July, we most likely wouldn't see it until sometime after the first of the year. So that continues to be a challenge. One of the sad things we did learn the other day was that C A Bean Asphalt lost the contract for Calvert County, which we have piggybacked on for a number of years, and they provided us very good service. So we are going to be looking at, to potentially look for other contracts that they might have with other governmental entities. Or possibly look at the other, you know, of having to use other contractors as well. So one of the challenges that we face because of bidding and procurement issues, but it is somewhat of a challenge. That's kind of everything that I have for you tonight, but if anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you so much, Bobby. And as always, you guys are doing a fantastic job, and I cannot imagine what you have ahead of you on Centennial. That is a hot mess down there. So thank you for working with S H A on that. I see Councilwoman Bryant Ward has her hand up. Go ahead.
I do, and thank you, Director Stahl, for all you do. You know, I am just so impressed with everything that you do down at that stormwater management plant. I do have a question, and I hope I understand it correctly. If not, please correct me. You said if the pipe was twenty-five years old, and at that time, it was a joint venture with the state in the nineties. But now it looks like it'll be our, it will be up to us to repair it on our own. Why wouldn't it be a joint venture now? Surely there's documentation to show that it was a joint venture in putting it in.
Councilwoman, it is absolutely, the pipe on their right-of-way would be their responsibility. So from the crosswalk right there on Cent- So from the crosswalk right there on Centennial, all the way across three oh one, we could say to State Highway, you know, we're not willing to do any part of that, and we could go off and do that on our own. We try to work very closely, and we generally do work very, very closely with Ashley and her whole team and with the State Highway team. It's very interesting. The county doesn't like to work with anybody. The county doesn't work with State Highway very much. And they don't work with us very much. They're, they're very, have been somewhat difficult to, for us to all work with. But we work extremely closely with State Highway. And we could do our side and, you know, fix the pipes. We could fix the sinkhole right down there at the end of Centennial and do that on our side. But it really would make more sense to do it all as one project. And so we are trying to do that. But if it does become too challenging, or that the state becomes difficult in their permitting process that they have to go through, sometimes getting the permits and going through State Highway's procurement process, and all of that can take, as you've probably seen on three oh one, sometimes can take a year to get some of these repairs made. They actually would rather us make the repairs ourself because of the process that they would have to go through. One of the things that we offered in this situation was if it was possible to slip line the pipe, if they would buy the pipe, we would work with a contractor and our guys to line the pipe ourselves. And so we would do something like that, where we would work together with State Highway to do that project. It may not be possible to slip line the pipe. And to be honest, if we have to go digging all the way across three oh one, that just wouldn't be something that we would do. If it's decided that the only way to fix that pipe would be to direct dig the pipe in the ground and put all new pipe across three oh one, we would let State Highway handle their portion. We would do ours separately and do our portion. As I say, it, it would clearly be something we'd like to work together on, but it might not be feasible. And I think we both realize that. You know, they're very good people to work with. Ashley's always been very good for us to work with. She's, you know, when I need people to come out and provide traffic control for me, or give me sign boards, or provide trucks for us to protect my workers, she has always bent over backwards to help us. And I, you know, and, and as I say, it's not that we wouldn't. It's just that we might not be able to at this point. And I, I, I want to, but I, I just might not be able to.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Bobby. And I look forward to getting those Mueller things fixed sooner than later.
Absolutely, Mayor. I apologize. I, as I say, these long lead time things that just are, you know, extremely, extremely challenging for us.
Thank you. Keep up the great work. All right, Kevin, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kevin Greenville, Treasurer for the Town of La Plata. Tonight, I present to you the Treasurer's Report for the month of May, twenty twenty-one. May marks the eleventh month of our fiscal year. As of May thirty-first, the town's general fund expenditures exceeded its revenue by approximately fifty-seven thousand dollars. Within the enterprise funds, the sanitation and sewer fund have expenditures that exceed revenues. Within the sewer fund, this is due to capital projects budgeted in F Y twenty that have carried over into F Y twenty-one. For our discussion at the council meeting on June fifteenth, service terminations and late charges will commence as normal for the next utility billing cycle, which is for the service period ending June thirtieth of this year. Tonight, for your consideration and adoption, was an ordinance authorizing the town to accept American Rescue Plan Act funding and a resolution authorizing the purchase of a used tractor. With your adoption of ordinance twenty-one dash fourteen, the town staff will immediately apply for funding through the state of Maryland for American Rescue Plan Act funding. Last week, I was appointed to the Maryland Government Finance Officers Association Board of Directors to represent Southern Maryland. Maryland G F O A is the Maryland chapter of the National Government Finance Officers Association. It provides training, programs, conferences, and other services to enhance the skills and performance of those involved in government finance policy and management. This concludes my Treasurer's Report for the month of May. I'd be happy to answer any questions Mayor and Council may have. And I thank you for allowing me to present tonight.
Well, congratulations to you. Of course, you're a two-time winning budget guru there. So thank you for representing the Southern Maryland, especially our town. You're doing an amazing job. I hope someone's clapping up there. So awesome. I don't have any questions tonight. Does Council have any questions or comments?
Just congratulations, Kevin. I'm super proud of you. You're so awesome. So I know you're doing an amazing job on that board.
Thank you.
Kevin, I'll follow on, say congratulations as well. Keep the figures moving.
Thank you.
Well done, Kevin.
Look at that. That was a good report there. Thank you. All right. We will, that concludes our reports from our Director and Treasurer. We'll go down to new business. I will start with the Commission Reports. And Councilman Goldsmith, if you want to, once you give your report, if you want to, if you have any nominations that might be out tonight, you can do it with your report as well. So the floor is yours.
Okay. Basically, the last, the Design Review Board met, and they only had one item primarily to discuss, and that was one oh nine Charles Street, which is a multifamily apartment building. That's going to be on the corner of Howard Street and Charles Street there. It'll be classified as central business. The, the Director Harrington did an excellent job of presenting the report, and her final recommendation was to approve it. And we did it at that particular point in time. It'll be a brick and cement siding construction. It'll blend very well, I think, with the corner there of the Baldes Building and the rest of the towns as well. I, I just want to say also that we got through that whole thing in a half an hour, and the meeting was over. So that's it for the report.
Do you have a report for, and that was ouch, I know where that was coming from. Anyway, do you have a report for the Historic Preservation Commission?
Well, we actually made the presentation of the plaque over at the hospital last week and had great attendance. All the council members attended. Hospital was attended and several members. And the Preservation Committee was there. So it went very well, and they'll be doing more of those throughout the town in the coming years.
Fantastic. And do you have anybody that you might want to appoint to your commission as well?
I have no input at this point in time. I'll have to wait and see if I get somebody next month.
There might be a motion to appoint Patty Mudd to serve a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Committee, Commission.
Okay.
If you make the motion.
If we make that motion? I make a motion that we assign Patty Mudd to the Historic Preservation Committee for a term of three years.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you so much. Councilman Trolinger, your reports?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. On June seventeenth, the Beautification Commission met. We talked about developing, and Ms. Manley, you can weigh in if I missed anything there, but developing R F P for native planting project. That's going to be something that some of our committee members are going to contribute and work together with Ms. Manley over the summer, even though we typically don't meet. We had an active meeting. I won't say we were as efficient as Mr. Goldsmith's committee, but we did discuss how important it was for Town Hall to be kept up, considering we all want La Plata to be kept beautifully. It starts at home, so to speak. So we, we looked over our R F P from two thousand fifteen as it relates to our current partners, as far as landscaping goes. And it seems as though we're going to be working with the town to make sure that we have a mutual understanding of our obligations there. We want the town to look great for our outdoor concerts now that we're reopened. And we've got some concerns. So we're going to be working with the town staff in revisiting our R F P from two thousand fifteen. As far as matters of information goes, we had an update, and some of you, probably most of you know this, that the mural project, which was previously known as the hospice wall, is going to be updated very soon and starting very soon. So we're excited about that. I think originally, the, the mural was, Ms. Manley can correct me if I'm wrong, but was supposed to be kind of up for a year or so, and it's been holding up for about eight. So we're excited for a new project there, and that should be starting soon. Anything I, I might have missed, Ms. Manley, please feel free to, to chime in. But we had a very productive meeting.
I think you covered it very well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmen and everybody in attendance. So the Planning Commission. However, for the July meeting, we have the Town of La Plata Annual Report that will be presented, a major site plan review, possibly waiting on the stormwater management approval for Step Two. And so that's it for the Planning Commission. And I do have a recommendation for a new member, but it's not on the agenda. May I still proceed?
Yes, please. I, I skipped that one. So yes. Didn't, I thought we had done that at the special meeting, but I could be wrong on that for Tracy Johnson.
Yeah, we didn't, I don't think, did we approve her, or did we say we would approve her June twenty-second?
Okay, it's not hurting to do a motion.
Okay. So, okay, so Chairman Gan and I would like to recommend the appointment of Tracy Johnson to fill an entire term on the Planning Commission until October twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. So I am presenting her tonight.
Thank you for the motion. Do I have a second?
This is Councilman Jenkins. I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Does that conclude your report?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everybody, and Councilmen and, and those watching. The Parks Commission did meet in May, and we're, we will not be meeting in June, July, or August unless there's something that needs us to meet. So hopefully, our next meeting will be September the ninth. I think you may have previously known, but thanks to Public Works, the splash pad has been fixed. And I noticed that the concert Friday was in great use at last Friday's concert. And the splash hours are currently from ten a.m. to nine p.m. daily. The, the, the town's community and parks playground application for F Y twenty-two was not funded, unfortunately. And the F Y twenty-three applications are due in August. So we will, we will again apply for, for that grant, and hopefully they'll be slotted, or they'll be used for the soft matting of the, of all the town playground facilities. Mayor, are you going to talk about the town concert or last Friday, or you want me, so I'll hold off on that one. I don't want to stir your thunder. I have emailed Vicky Kelly, who's the current Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission, and she's agreed to stay on as the Chair. So is this an opportune time to make a motion to extend Vicky Kelly's chairmanship of the Parks and Recreation Commission tonight?
Yes, Councilman Jenkins, if I may. The term would be for four years on the Parks and Recreation Commission, and the terms for Chair are for one year.
Okay. And then I have reached out to Mary Winkler, but I have not heard back yet. So I'll keep seeing if she's, she's going to agree to stay on as a member. So I would make, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Oh, is it, is it Danielle? Does he make a motion for Vicky Kelly to reappoint her?
Yes. Yes.
I will then thank you. I will formally make a motion to nominate Ricky Kelly to continue as Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. And I thank you, Councilman Jenkins. That does bring us up to my upcoming events. As Councilman Jenkins had indicated, we had a concert, we started our concert series. Jim, I don't even want to see you smiling there because the first concert was canceled. The second one, Councilman Goldsmith ran beautifully. The third one was canceled. And the fourth one, third and fourth, I was there, and the first and the fourth one, well, we had a disaster last week where the dueling pianos from Bobby McKees, it looked like their motherboard fried. I know that Sergeant Bagley was a huge help in, in helping me get a router, and that didn't help. And so unfortunately, they were unable to play. But we're hoping to reschedule them because we had an amazing crowd out there. This Friday, the weather looks like it's going to be good. I don't know if I'm going to come back because there seems to be disasters associated with that. So I'm going to have to contemplate that. But it is going to be the Park, Parker Borrow Project. So we have them coming up. We have the Bootleggers coming up, Taboo, and the Bradley Turner Bands. We have some amazing bands coming up soon. We also have the kids programs coming up, which will be Blue Sky Puppets on June twenty-ninth, and Marcia and the Postarms, can't see that without my glasses, on July sixth. And then also Eric Energy will be on July twentieth. And then the other thing that Council and many of our great team at Town Hall will be attending next week, well, this Sunday, Sunday through Wednesday, we will be attending our Maryland Municipal League Summer Conference in person out at Ocean City. So we're excited about that. But other than that, that's just a little flavor of what's coming up. So I encourage everyone to participate and come see us at the Town Hall events and enjoy the splash pad and all those fun things. So with that said, I'm done with my report. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I moved adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. And, and Jim, do you see it was only an hour and twenty-eight minutes?
You're getting better.
All right. You guys all have a great night. Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for the.
Take care.